Crowner.
Aye.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support. There's a motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through fourteen, which are amendments from the regular city council meeting on July first, two thousand and twenty. Approved payment to value distribution, approved payment Southeast Iowa Regional Planning, approved payment land and water vegetation control, approved payment IDL ready mixed crate, approved payment to no before, approved payment to municipal workers compensation, approved payment to IDE MIA, Identity and Security USA, approved payment to Greater Burlington Partnership for the Partnering for the Future Three campaign, approved payment Des Moines County Emergency Communications, approved payment Diligent Corporation, approved Sergeant Nelson and Sergeant Boakes attendance at the Firearms and Instructor School, approved the Cooks' monthly treasury report for June two thousand and twenty, and approved the claims list as presented in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Knightmeyer.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Carried. Staff reports. Dan.
I just had one thing yesterday. I, along with the engineer and reps from the college and the hospital, walked the trail project, did, wrote down some punch, small punch list items and discussed some of the issues that both those sides brought up. And I think we've come to an agreement where everybody's reasonably happy and where you got a way forward. We'll get it all fixed when we, that, when we, we'll have to reseed it in the spring because the DOT seeding season doesn't, isn't till fall, so it'll just die again in this heat. But, once it gets all seeded again this fall, it'll, we'll have everything put together and I'll, hopefully, everybody's happy. It sounded like we came to an agreement, which took a little, it took a little discussion, but I think we're there, so.
Do I have anything for Dan? Mike?
Just to catch you up on the manhole repair, it's all done as of this afternoon except for one left. They're going to come back in two months and go over them again and make sure that they all did seal and check them. My plan's after the rain today, we're going to be popping some manholes and looking. It's pretty amazing how much of their foam and rubber material came back in around pipes and seams when they injected it in and set up in there. So, hopefully, our I and I issue is going to be a drastic change when they get done. We'll know by how many hours the lift stations are pumping, where the main ones were. We should be, see a, a big difference there. They'll get the last one done. And then, just want to let you know the dog waste stations where the parks are in. And soon as I get time, we'll start installing them around the parks.
Do I have anything for Mike?
Just one thing. So, we've talked about this manhole issue, maybe solving some sewer water issues. Do we have any way that we're actually tracking that issue to know, okay, we fixed this part, here's how it affected this?
Somewhat by man, by each lift station. Like, everything out west, that one, we'll know right away because there's a pump out there and them are wrote down daily, the hours. But it all depends on how many inches of rain you get, how dry the ground was when you get it, whether the ground will take it, if the ground's saturated versus dry. It's one of them things that's going to take time down at sewer plant on the amount of infiltr, amount of liquids that are coming in to know with rainfall what's going on. It's not, I can't give you an answer next week if we have a monsoon. It'll, by next spring, having, from now till next spring on a, on a rain, we'll know a lot. I mean, I should know a lot by some of the lift stations on heavy rains and how much they've slowed down and how, how many hours they actually pump. It, we should be able to see immediate on, on those. But, the numbers of gallons, I can't give you that until we have it recorded for.
I, I would just like to come back to that conversation when you feel like you have some idea of how it affected it, to know if we need to go back and do something else as a city to, to change that and keep helping it, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Mike, besides driving by the pool, since we're not going to be open, is there a way, those, all those slides and play areas have really faded. Is there a paint or something?
I've already been approached by that, and I'm working on quotes right now to have those repainted. It takes a special epoxy and I've got hold of ACO and I got two more people I'm going to call and get some prices on before we open up next year to get all three slides painted.
Okay, Jesse?
Since last meeting, Tyler's been in the academy for a week and a half now. No issues with him going up there in classes. I haven't heard of anything. And then, I was approached to ask about some firework calls for the year. This year, we have went up over last year. Last year, from June first to July fifteenth of two thousand and nineteen, we went from, we had eight calls for service here in West Burlington. Same time period of June first through July fifteenth of this year, we've had twenty-one calls for service with no citations issued. Out of the county, same timeframe of last year, was a hundred and sixty-seven calls for service for the whole county. And this year, for the whole county's four hundred and fourteen calls for service for, for fireworks. So, there was quite, quite an increase throughout the whole county. I would imagine some of that probably had to do with some extra money maybe laying around for some of these people. I'm not quite sure, but we did not issue any citations. We do have an ordinance to do that. We can do that for sure. It's just kind of officer's discretion, and if they cooperate and put them away or don't light anymore off, then we're, we normally don't issue citations. If we have repeat offenders, that's when we really start hammering them on citations like that. We have a lot of ordinances in town that we have never wrote citations for, like blowing leaves out in the street or a few times, you know, or grass clipping. So, I mean, we do have those ordinances out there. We can go that route next year if we see the problems persist next, next summer like we had this summer.
So, are they like, not likely to write a citation because with the, the offense, it's like two hundred and fifty dollars? Is that?
I, I don't believe that's an issue because we write citations for no driver's license or no insurance. That could cost up to five hundred dollars for those, those offenses. It's just more, I think, it just, you know, if they cooperate with you and they put them away. But if we get called back to that location for them writing or lighting fireworks off, I, we, we can definitely do a different approach towards them if we get the call back to saying, hey, they're still lighting the fireworks off or it's still happening.
When people report those, are they saying, okay, well, I think it's my neighbor down here? Are they actually giving physical addresses?
Most of them are, what I can see are physical addresses. Some of them are, you know, I didn't break that down, but, you know, there's, you can tell, like, this is in West Burlington, but four-sixteenth South Drive is a specific address or you got five hundred block of South Central. So, that's within the block or it's coming from my, you know, my neighbor or, or this house or, or wherever.
And without actually seeing them do it, I mean, it's kind of hard to decide.
It is. We talked about maybe working on the ordinance of saying that if it coming from your house, maybe the property owner gets cited for the site, cited for the fireworks if they're not the ones lighting it off because it's their, their residence and we can maybe go after the property owner instead of, if we can't find out who's doing it, maybe we can go after the residents for allowing it to happen on their, on their property.
Well, either we just do away with the fireworks and just go back to snakes and sparklers.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't restrict the sale of them. You can restrict where they get shot off, but you can't restrict the sale of them.
Which we already do, so.
Yeah, we're kind of doing that, but.
Just as a comparison, I was talking with Chief Trexel, Burlington has an ordinance that says no fireworks whatsoever and their calls were significant this year. And he did discuss if we decide we kind of want to do something. If we allow them in just residential, as long as it's a hundred and fifty feet away from an occupied structure, even though I know the mayor expressed to me that, you know, someone in his neighborhood was shooting them off, that's a business district, so that's highly illegal. And on the fourth itself, shoot them off at the mall and Farm King and all that, that's all business. So, that is illegal. If we decide to do an ordinance change, maybe coordinate with Burlington to try and come up with something. I know we use the same lawyer, so it might be something that we can have a little more teeth in enforcing between two communities versus one.
Well, I know the city managers, Lister, talked about it. And some people go the way their ordinance talks about writing the property owner, fireworks ordinance. Some of the other ones use, what they use for party houses, like keeping a disorderly house, and they fine them for keeping a disorderly house, which I don't, I, do we have that in our current code someplace?
We do have a House of Fame.
Something like that, so you could use that. That, that's worked in some other places somewhat, but, to be able to, because that's the concern, is if you don't actually see the person lighting it, you don't have anybody to write a ticket to. So, the way cities are trying to figure out a way around that is to either get the property owner, have your ordinance, have it go to the property or do the disorderly house, fine.
Well, if we, we decide to revisit it, I wouldn't mind considering an ordinance to disban it if we want to revisit it sometime.
I don't like hearing them late at night, but, and if it's forty calls next year, I, I don't want that to happen. But I feel like this is an odd year where everybody's been kind of cooped up. They didn't have anything to really to go do except just fireworks that day. My hope is this is the worst year we have and it gets better.
Maybe we, we need to do the citations and that might trim it back.
If we can find the persons doing it, we can do that.
Okay, Sean, where you at?
Since last meeting, I did hand deliver a letter concerning the email on the House of Pennington Street. That has been delivered, clocks to come back. I've sent out over twenty notices in the last two weeks combined regarding various nuisance issues in town. Mattress on West Burlington Avenue, I'm sure a lot of us have seen. I actually have received a second letter on that one, so the next step is complete abatement. And then, there's a few others. Some commercial properties on the outskirts of town, they've been sent letters. I did receive notice back today from one of them that they will be handling it. I said, well, obviously, it's raining, so it's kind of hard to deal with right now, but I'd like it done as soon as they're able to get in there. I talked with the hospital today, with the county fair. We're not having a fair this year for the county, but we are having a four-eight show. They're going to be moving the COVID testing site to over by the east side of J.C. Penney. They'll be setting a tent up temporarily to handle that for the traffic flow with some temporary signs for the COVID testing so we can keep having that. They indicated to me they had like ninety tests scheduled for the day. So, we are getting a lot, a lot of people going out and getting tested, which is good. So, that'll be happening. So, when you do see that tent up behind J.C. Penney's, that's what that's for. So, we'll have a little bit more traffic going around there. On the fire side, the SCBA have been, had their annual test done. There's some minor repair work on them. And then, half the cylinders are currently being hydro, hydrotested. They have to be hydrotested every five years. And after this weekend, we'll get the bottles back and we'll send the other half off, get their test.
Do I have anything for Sean? Are they going to, when they move that site over there, are they going to use any part of the pennies?
The way it sounded, they.
Because, I mean, out at the college, they have a secure area for their equipment and everything.
He didn't indicate if they were going to necessarily be inside, but it's going to be like by the old catalog area.
Yeah, I imagine that's.
We talked about that, so I, I would think, you know, in case we have weather like today and it's got to be under a tent or something, may, may have to step inside. I'm not sure.
Well, they kept all their equipment in one of those little rooms that was on the west end of the, I call it the hog confined building. That's where all the pigs are at for the county fair.
They may be, it's something they're working out with the mall. I just told them, I said, I'm fine with it. I'm not going to request a permit for a tent or anything because this is, this is a matter of public health, so.
Speaking of permits, have you issued any new business permits lately?
I had the one request for the workforce development. And that's the state will never see the two hundred and fifty dollar license.
That's, that's Robin Peter to pay Paul.
I do have one business that's going to be going in here out on the southwest area by the hospital. But I haven't seen a lot of businesses coming in as far as asking, requesting for permits. I only have the one set of plans that I'm actually reviewing right now.
Do I have anything for Sean? Kelly, you got anything going on?
Not tonight.
Other than, I think, most of us are using, I think, Andy, this new program that you got going.
Yeah, I sent out the new, with the new software, the new agenda and packet software so you can kind of just see what it looks like. It's not exactly the way I want it yet. They're still working on tweaking it a little bit, but when it was emailed out, I didn't think about it, but it didn't come from my email address extension. So, I think initially it got hung up in junk mail and Brad was trying to push it through on his end. So, hopefully, we can get that, so it'll just come right to you automatically. And Teresa was very cautious.
Yes, because I know that no before program at my place, and I thought, well, this is an external.
That's the same thing. I wasn't clicking on it, no way.
Junk, and then I talked to Brad and he said, no, that's real. And I said, uh-uh.
Well, you don't, you don't know. I, I know. It's, I didn't realize that's how it would look in the email when it went out, so. I sent it out both ways, so you should have both cop, both PDF like you normally have and the new software.
Okay, Kathy, you got anything going on?
Oh, yeah, just one final note about the fireworks. One reason I said that I'd consider a ban, if we wanted to talk about it, we ended up with five about this long in our backyard. Great big things. But anyway, as far as legal fireworks, I wanted to thank Andy for the beautiful fireworks show for West Burlington. I, we watched it out at the mall and there were lots of cars out at the mall. And I just wanted to say a little bit about one of our projects that we're going to start working on, which is the tree project for the residents of West Burlington, particularly those who have lost an ashtray, but also for our public places too. We are going to be trying to get a grant to get five thousand dollars worth of trees free for the city. But our first step will be to form a committee. We need a, a good-sized committee that'll be volunteers to help plant trees or pick up trees, whatever. So, that's just where I'm starting now. I'm just going to start trying to form these committees. And we also, we already have two members. One, thanks to Teresa recruited a new member, so we're just barely getting this off the ground, but you'll hear more about this later. And that's it.
And I started, did start working on the newsletter, so.
Okay.
Well, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, be able to get that out and some information about boards and committees.
Okay, yeah, there will be an article. I wrote an article for the newsletter, so when it goes out, everybody will see, have a lot of information about the projects.
I did too, and mentioned all the committees that we have and asking for volunteers.
Okay.
All righty. Andy, you got anything?
Not this week.
You done a good job on the fireworks?
It wasn't me, but they did a great show. It was a lot longer than I thought it would be. It would be like a ten-minute show, it was like twenty-five minutes, so.
That's great.
Yeah, so.
With all the surrounding around us.
I, I haven't pulled it off yet, but I brought my three-sixty camera that can record the whole thing at the same time and recorded, so I'm hoping that turned out well and got not only the major fireworks, but all the little ones.
I was wondering if the guy that was flying the airplane, if he got anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, boys?
Just with the fireworks, the people, I thought they're at the hospital. And soon as it was done, you could hear people, you know, really talking about they enjoyed it and everything else, so, that's all.
Please?
I had my own personal fireworks at Pat Klein Park. They were quite wonderful. And I thought maybe I need to get with Jesse because we nominated you to get something put together in the newsletter for kick, kickstarting the neighborhood watch again.
Okay.
And I don't know if school's going to be in session. I don't know what they're going to do at the school, but I know before they always sent literature home with the kids.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Well, there's a lot of great feedback about the fireworks show as well. Great job.
All righty, anyone wishing to address council matters that are not on the agenda tonight? We'll go to item number one, a public hearing. We'll hold a public hearing to review an application for a state revolving fund, SRF loan, and review the contents of an environmental information document for a south lift station replacement project. Public hearing notice, SRF loan oh-seven fifteen twenty. Open the public hearing. Did we receive any comments, Kelly?
No comments, no.
Any public comments? Susan from Regional Planning's here. She's going to give us the public.
Can I just stand?
Well, if you do it in a minute, you can stand. If it's going to take you ten minutes, you can sit.
But the problem is, honestly, is that they can't hear.
I'll sit.
I'll sit, yeah.
Yeah, if you use that mic, because we sit there and nobody can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Coffey. I'm with the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission. And the city of, our, this public hearing is to explain the environmental informational document and how it came upon. City of West Burlington has been put on the intended use plan with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and will be applying for an SRF loan for, SRF loan on the south lift station project. Sorry, I was, um, um, let's see. And one of the requirements is completing an environmental informational document for this south lift station project. The project is located in the city of West Burlington. That is located in Des Moines County, which is approximately seventy miles east of Otomo, Iowa, and seventy miles southwest of Davenport. The existing current waste collection system, the city of West Burlington existing south lift station is located approximately fifteen hundred feet east of the city's wastewater treatment plan, plant that was, that has deteriorated and is in need of replacement. This lift station services a hospital, a community college, in industrial, commercial, and residential areas. Two pumps were originally installed in the lift station, but the city struggles to keep both pumps in operation. One of the pumps is running efficiently because of difficulty with sealing the discharge, discharge piping. A new lift station is necessary to ensure that it will be compatible of handling high flows after rainfall events and will not back sewage up into homes and businesses. The city has noticed significant infiltration and exaggerated peak flows, particularly from the gravity sewer entering from the east. The south lift station is one of the two lift stations that transport raw wastewater directly to the wastewater treatment plant. Southeastern Community College, Great River Medical Center, as well as the residential, commercial, industrial areas are serviced with this lift station. The existing lift station has three influent gravity sewers from northeast and southwest. Lift station originally had a wet well and a dry well for the pumps. But in nineteen ninety-nine, the lift station was modified and new submersible pumps were put in the old well, old wet well. Since nineteen ninety-nine, the lift station has been deteriorating and is beginning to fail due to difficult, difficulty seating pump bases and generally aging of the manhole. Two pumps were originally installed, but an uneven floor has made the use of both pumps difficult because of difficulty aligning and sealing the discharge piping. The lift station has, at times, only had one functional pump and it is spraying water out of the discharge piping, which means that the pump is running, running efficiently. The purpose for the project is to make improvements to the wastewater collection system, increase capacity, and to replace obsolete system to safety and reliable operate the city of West Burlington's wastewater collection system for the next twenty years. The project includes installation of a lift station with three chopper pumps, valve, vault, electrical building, emergency generator, approximately one thousand four hundred and eighty-five linear feet of twelve-inch PVC force main, force main, modification to three existing manholes, a motorized crane, and miscellaneous apparatus. The new lift station will extend about twenty-five feet below grade. The new valve, valve vault will extend about eleven feet below grade and the new building foundation will extend about five feet below grade. This treat, the treated wastewater, excuse me, the treated wastewater from the proposed facility was discharged to Spring Lake. There were, there were no alternatives considered. The project is in an immediate need for the city to protect its residents and to save energy by running more efficient pumping systems. A no-action alternative is not viable due to the aging infrastructure at the south lift station. The, the measures that were taken, there was individuals that were contacted for this environmental informational document. They were the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, State Historical Society of Iowa, Iowa DNR Conservation and Recreational Division, Iowa DNR Water Resource Section, and multiple Indian tribes. The environmental impact summary, traffic patterns within the community may be disrupted above just because of the construction of the equipment, but it's only short, for a short port, period of time during the construction. Positive environmental impact, environment, positive environmental effects to be realized from the proposed project, da-da-da. Positive environmental effect, effects from the city of West Burlington will include a decrease in the possibility of future wastewater discharge and compliance with the city's discharge permit. The reason for the concluding of no significant impact, and what that means is that the project will not impact, impact the environment. The project will not significantly affect the pattern and type of land use, industrial, commercial, agriculture, recreational, residential, or growth and distribution of population. The project will not conflict with local, regional, or state land use plan or policies. The project will not impact wetlands. The project will not affect threatened and endangered species or their habitats, providing that any tree cutting is conducted between April first and March thirty-first to avoid impacting endangered bats. If any state or federally listed threatened or endangered species or communities are found during the planning or construction phases, additional studies and/or mitigation may be required. The project will not displace population, alter the character of existing residential areas, or convert significant farmlands to non-agriculture proposes, purposes. The project will not affect the one-hundred-year flood plain. The project will not, will not have effect on parklands, preserves, other public lands or areas of recognized scenic or recreational value. No historic properties will be adversely affected by the proposed project. However, if project activity uncovers any items that might be of archaeological, historical, or architectural interest, or is important, new archaeological, historical, or architectural data should be encountered in the project APE. The applicant should make reasonable efforts to avoid further impacts to the property until if project activity uncovers any items that might be of archaeological, historical, or architectural interest, or is important, new archaeological, historical, or architectural data should be encountered in the project APE. The emissions of fugitive dust beyond the lot line of the property during the proposed project, the project will have, will not have a significant adverse effect upon local ambient noise levels, surface water quality, groundwater quality, or quantity or water supply. No significant impact to surface water quality, fish, shellfish, wildlife, or the natural habitats is expected. The project description, scope, and anticipated environmental impacts detailed above are accurate and incomplete to the best of my knowledge. Any questions?
Any questions? Got a comment, Susan?
Sure.
Back on project description.
Uh-huh.
It says receiving stream. The, I mean, this project doesn't actually.
Where, where are you at?
Under project description.
Uh-huh.
Where it says receiving stream, the third paragraph.
Oh, okay, the treated wastewater from the proposed facility, or discharged to Spring Creek.
Says the treated wastewater from a proposed facility. We're not ma, I mean, that's, that's not, that's not treated wastewater. That's going from that lift station. It's, it's untreated wastewater going from the lift station to the plant, and then it's treated and then goes out. So, should we change that?
I will let the individual that put this environmental information document from DNR. So, you're saying that, that it's not treated wastewater. It is.
Not from that, not from.
Not from that lift station, okay.
A lift station goes to the plant to get treated and then it's discharged.
Okay.
To the, to Spring Creek.
Okay.
It's raw sewage there.
It's raw sewage that's going to the plant. It's raw sewage that's going to the plant to get treated. But the way this reads, the way this reads, it says...
It's not going straight to Spring Creek?
No.
No.
Okay, so maybe that's what they mean, that it will eventually, it goes through that and then goes to Spring Creek, it doesn't say that.
That's what will happen, but the way this reads.
Right.
The treated wastewater from the proposed facility.
Okay.
That's not, that's not, that's not the case.
Okay, I'll say something to her.
It's gotta get treated first, then goes to the Spring Creek.
Okay, I will say something to her, okay?
Okay, I don't know who put that.
No, I don't know where, I'm sure that, that it was with the engineer, and I'm not sure, I have no idea, but I will say something to her.
Okay. Unless they did, unless this is just a canned thing from the last one, we did the sewer plant.
Right.
It could be.
The last one we did was the water tower.
Yeah, I was gonna say with the water tower that we did the last thing.
My guess is they have to mention where it ultimately goes, and so it's probably just a little word thing, because I would guess that.
That's what I'm thinking, that they just, they're saying where it's discharged, they just don't go from line to line to line, it doesn't say it goes from here to here, and then to Spring Creek. But if you want it in there, I can have them put it in there.
Sure, that they don't come back and say, hey.
Okay.
You're gonna...
Nope, I will have them, I'll say something to them and ask them if they can do that, okay?
Okay. Any council comments in the public hearing? We'll close the public hearing then, and we'll go to new business, item number one, which is to consider entering into a contract with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning to administer a state revolving fund for the South Lift Station replacement project, not to exceed $30,000.
Move.
Motion of support, any discussion?
Dan, I just wanna note, was there a point when we switched over from having our own staff handle these to regional planning, or was that always contracted out?
It's always been contracted out because it's federal money, it's very complicated, we have to, I think Susan audits all their payrolls to make sure that they're keeping up with the federal, it's, it's, it's way more work than we can handle in our office. We've never, with federal money, we typically have them administer federal grants because it's just, it's so complicated, they do it a lot more often than we do, and the consequences of making a mistake are pretty serious if it's federal stuff, so.
And we're saying the top end of this is 30,000, do we have an estimate on what it will actually be?
Normally, when I do grant administration, that is, no matter how big or how small the project, it's all the same, I do the same amount of work, you know, you know, start of the project, one thing is doing the public hearing, that is, if it's needed, working with the environmental, working with DNR, working with the city, working with the engineer, doing draw requests, reporting reports, going out and doing employee interviews on the construction job site, getting payrolls in, reviewing the payrolls, contacting the contractors if any problems with the payrolls, requesting for additional paperwork, if there is any on payrolls, and closing out project, helping with the audits when they come through. So, it's the same thing, you know, whenever I do grant administration, it's the same type of work, always, so it's always the same amount that I always charge from one community to another community, it's never...
So, we should expect somewhere right around that 30,000, is what you're saying? Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments?
And that does, and that does get charged, I mean, when I say charged, it will be drawn from the SRF, it'd be part, it'll be paid through that.
Roll call.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Height Meyer?
Aye.
Carrie. Alright, item number two then is to consider a resolution setting a date for a public hearing and letting and approving the form of notice on a planned specification contract and estimated cost for the South Lift Station. That date would be for the 19th, and bids would be received by the 13th, and then they'll be awarded on the 19th.
Of August.
Hmm?
Of August.
Of August, yeah. Vote.
So, move.
Support. Motion of support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Height Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, is there another resolution that we gotta go through? Or is that covered out?
No.
Thanks, Susan. Because I s...
No, I think that's it.
Okay, that's, that's the setting the hearing.
The next one, they'll approve the plans and specs, and the next one is award the bid. Well, it, the way Ben worded it...
It's kinda weird.
He did say, and approving the form of contract and proposed plans, which I have the proposed plans attached, so if we, really the way it is worded, it would approve those plans and specs and let the, to let the bid.
At the same time?
Yeah.
But in the meantime, you can look at those plans and specs, we don't have to do anything with them tonight.
Well, you know, it probably does need to be, it probably does need to include that, because part of that is letting the, letting the bids, so you wanna have the plans, I would think, approved before you send them out to bid.
Yeah. Okay, now we need a motion to approve the...
But it's all in just one resolution.
The plans and specs. So, move.
Support.
Okay, motionless support, any further discussion?
I guess I don't really even know what we're voting on at the moment, exactly which plans you're talking about.
It's the plans for the lift station.
The South Lift Station project.
And all that information's in that packet, you're talking about all the supplemental, the, okay.
It's all in the packet.
I have the full document, it's 380-some pages, but it's all the nitty-gritty nuts and bolts of the entire project, I just didn't include it in the packet. I included the, you'll see in there, part of the...
It's got the table of contents, it shows everything.
It talks about the SRF documents, it's...
I'm fine with it, as long as what we're approving is the information that I have in the, in the packet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Height Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Waterman? Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number three is to consider payment Snyder Associates for engineering services related to the following projects. The water tower booster station improvement, $11,950. The wastewater treatment panel lift station improvement, $3,847.60. Lewis Park water restoration, $11,465.57. And the Gear Avenue Trail, $13,059.
Motion approve all.
Support. Motionless support, approve all of, all those, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Height Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number four is to consider purchase of LED stop signs for the intersection of Broadway and Long Metal, and be two stop signs for an amount of $3,068.50. These are, been requested to put up there with the kids' traffic, and probably be easier to see if southbound and northbound traffic with the LED lights. So, move.
Motion approve, if Jesse sits and watches them stop.
Excuse me?
They can flash all you want, but they ain't gonna stop.
Right.
Yeah, motionless support, any discussion?
Have we had...
Teresa made the motion, Royce, Royce or Al.
Have we had issues on that?
We've, we're talking a little bit.
We've had, we just had another phone call, Katie had come in, a citizen that lives there with her concern about the flow of traffic is faster on Broadway, and then with school going, and I know when school's going, there's a lot of children cross that busier main street through town, and in years past, people have questioned it too, I know, it's been an ongoing thing, and I just think that maybe it would be a good idea. And they can be programmed like up at the school, like at 10 o'clock at night, or nine, whenever the school is, and they stop flashing, if people are gonna be annoyed by the flashing of it, but like Jesse said, they're pretty much, you only notice that flashing coming head-on to them, if you're off to the side, you really don't, you don't see it.
I know, I don't know, I guess I just believe that there's a stop sign there, it's been there my whole life. I know we get some new people in town, but they're not usually coming up and down that street, and stop sign oughta be good enough, if it's not, let's stop them, find them, and move on, I'm not sure we need to spend money to do it. Like, keeping our kids safe, I'd rather spend that 3,000 on extra sidewalks heading out to Recplex or something like that, so, I'm against this one.
Jesse, do you still have the radar that, you know, if people drive by, it shows how fast they're going?
We got that through...
Regional Planning.
Regional Planning out there.
Yeah, we can set that up.
Maybe it wouldn't hurt, just get people mindful, but, oh, man.
Well, they're not gonna be, if you know there's a stop sign there, they're not gonna be, they're gonna be slowing down.
Sure.
I mean, they, they speed up and down my street on Lefler constantly too, and that's right between the school and where you're talking.
That's why I say Lefler, Lefler and Long Metal too, the traffic is, at school time, I mean, it just, it, it, either way to me, it doesn't matter, I'm just saying, it keeps, an intersection keeps getting brought up, so, whatever you wanna do.
We're on a racetrack, Andy, they go around to pick up kids, and then they race around.
They're zooming around because...
You've gotta see it too, it's bad right in there, but, kinda...
So, maybe we can get the radar thing and put it up in like the 500 block of Broadway, and move it over to Lefler, and make people more mindful of the school.
I know other communities use that, so I'll see if it's available, when it's available.
You pay me well enough, I'll check it.
Sit out there with a sign and flip it.
Eighty, how much money can I get for eight?
Okay, roll call.
Height Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number five is consider authorizing expenditures for improvement to the fire department for the training grounds, an amount of $38,000. Think you read, all read Sean's memo?
You already got that budgeted, right, Sean?
Yeah, that was the amount we had budgeted for, for this current budget year, and then this should take care of the major expenditures out there, and next year it would be going down like, I know Andy asked at budget time, and so it should be going down after that. Biggest lion's share's gonna be getting those containers and the electrical work.
Motion approve.
Support. Motionless support, any discussion?
So, these won't be coming back individually as expenditures, then?
No.
For each project? Okay.
Be similar to how it was last year, we had to ask for 30,000 last year, and it was approved by the council last year, and then as expenditures came in, Leslie could get them, take care of them, paid, but they'd still be reported here.
I think you guys do a great job, I just, I don't think this training ground's something we need for a little West Burlington, Iowa, I think if we're doing it, we need to have these other entities giving money into it, that are using it, we could build it through that, so, I'm a no vote on this.
Okay. I look at it a little different, Andy, maybe we can start charging one day, when our places come in.
We did plan to, didn't we plan to start charging?
Yes, yes.
I guess, kinda like city of Burlington, they were gonna buy the police training thing, and so we paid $5,000 to help them purchase that, so, I guess I'd just like to see us do the same thing.
Roll call.
Please?
Please? Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Height Meyer?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number six, consider purchasing two sets of bunker gear for the fire department, an amount of $4,100, plus shipping.
Motion approve.
Second.
Yeah, motionless support, any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Height Meyer?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Motion carrying. We have any old business? Anyone wishing to address council matters that we did discuss, or didn't discuss tonight? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Things adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. What, the trailer?